For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you. And do we have a report from the closed session?
We do, Mr. President. The following votes were all unanimous, seven ayes and noes, no nays. The first one is Adella Escavell Swinson, appointed interim Associate Vice Chancellor for Student Services District Office, effective March 11, 2013 through March 11, 2014, or until the position is filled at $140,000 annually at Step A with a $300 monthly stipend. Number two, Pho May Saivany Young, Director of APAS Program Laney College, effective March 18, 2013 through February 28, 2015, at $95,000 annually at Step Four. Extension of the contract for Dr. Kerry Compton, Acting Vice President of Instruction at Berkeley City College, beginning February 27, 2013 through May 8, 2013, at $145,000 annually or until the incumbent returns from leave, whichever occurs first. Meave Catherine Bergman, Interim Director of Special Projects, Berkeley City College, effective March 1, 2013 through June 30, 2013, until the position is filled, whichever occurs first, at $80,000 annually. If these individuals are here, if you would please stand so that we can welcome you into your new positions. Mr. President, that concludes the report for tonight's closed session.
Thank you. Is there a move to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Seconded.
Second.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we do have a change on item number 16, which is...
Item 16.
Item number 16 is the Everge Contract. The revised amount requested is not to exceed $157,800 through July 31, 2013.
Okay, with that change, are there any other changes to the agenda? At this time, are there any items in the...
We got approval.
Excuse me, in the consent calendar that are going to be pulled off for discussion and dropped into the action portion of the calendar and debated? There being none? All those in favor of the agenda as modified?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We now come to comments from the public. Do we have speakers?
We do. We have two speakers this evening, Mr. President. The first one is Matthew Goldstein, followed by Romeo Garcia.
Thanks. Good evening. I'm Matthew Goldstein, President of the Peralta Federation of Teachers, AFT Local 1603. Tonight, I'd like to call trustees' attention to the longstanding issue of class size limits and to update the board on PFT's ongoing contract negotiations with the district. As you may know, class size limits, or caps as they're commonly called, are for the most part set by fire code at Peralta. That is, for the overwhelming majority of courses taught here at the district, physical room capacity, not optimal teaching and learning conditions, determines how many students will be allowed to enroll in a given class. There are exceptions made for classes in composition and ESL in English and for some CTE and lab offerings, but by and large, it's room size that determines the caps. This somewhat ham-handed approach to managing enrollment numbers has the virtue of simplicity, but it utterly ignores the most fundamental aspects of what we're supposed to be concerned about here at the colleges, ensuring that students have teachers who can offer individualized attention and that the classroom is an environment that's conducive to learning. The brute realities of the formula that's used by the state to fund colleges is somewhat responsible for the problem, of course, but there are steps we could take here at Peralta to make the caps line up with the actual needs of our actual students. First, college administrators should consult faculty about the appropriate caps for their classes. After all, teachers are in the best position to determine and assess what's best for their students, and they're the ones whose workloads increase and whose students suffer when more bodies are shoehorned into their classrooms. Next, we might reevaluate our reliance on the notion of productivity. The colleges are driven by a new budget allocation model to emphasize productivity, and they're rewarded with a greater share of the district pie when they raise their average student-to-faculty ratios. So this gives administrations at the college level a powerful incentive to cram more students into classrooms, whether or not it makes good pedagogical sense. In fact, this term, two of our colleges raised caps without first consulting faculty, and of course, faculty objected loudly and pushed back, and it's this pushback that called our attention to this too-long, unaddressed problem. So look for PFT to join with the academic senate in the months ahead to lead discussions among faculty about how best to address this issue and how to deal with or how to promote effective pedagogy and handle instructors' workloads and substitute some new method to replace this sort of clumsy approach to class size regulation. Finally, a brief negotiations update. PFT met with the district on Valentine's Day to discuss possible changes to the basic 10-month counseling contract. While no formal proposals were offered at the talks, the two sides seem to agree on the core issues, and a workable agreement does not appear at all unlikely at this point. Further negotiation sessions are being scheduled with the state facilitator even as I speak before you tonight, so I'll update you at the next meeting. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you.
Got it. All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Romeo Garcia. I'm the Executive Director of the Peralta Colleges Foundation. Thought I'd take an opportunity this evening to share more good news with you about what's going on at the foundation. Unfortunately, I don't have another big check like I did last time, but I'll keep trying. I did want to announce that our golf tournament is set for this year. As you know, that's one of our major events for the year, and that's going to be on July 22nd, Monday, July 22nd. It is later than usual, and we decided to move to a different venue to try things differently, and we'll be at the Sequoia Country Club in Oakland. So there'll be more information coming out about that. I saved the date, but I just wanted to provide that announcement. Also, wanted to share that our website has been updated, in particular to bring attention to the scholarships that we have available through the foundation and that we manage on behalf of other constituents throughout the district. I have been going out to student groups because we really want to make sure that the information gets out to students. So tomorrow, no, on Thursday, I'll be meeting with the Laney Student Leadership Group. I just met a gentleman from Berkeley City College this evening, so I can also meet with their leadership group at the college. And for the other colleges' presidents, if you would like to put the person in touch with me who's in charge of the student leadership at your different campuses, I would love to come and do that as well, because we really want to make sure that students have the information that they need to make sure they have access to the scholarships that are available through the foundation. Scholarship applications are available now, and the deadline for the scholarship applications is April 1st. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I'd like to go backwards and cover an item that I skipped in my desire to create a new record of the shortest meeting ever for the Peralta Community Colleges. We need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Mr. President?
Yes?
I was going to read the entirety of the minutes at this meeting, but trustee Handy asked me to keep my remarks brief. I actually just had a change on item 18 on minutes, and I will send this to the board clerk, but it just re-characterizes my comments on academic freedom, on freedom of speech. And then also, instead of nine units, I think I said 90 unit cap, and I'll send that to the board clerk if we can make those amendments. I have no objection to the minutes otherwise.
Thank you. I believe we can do without a motion, just we accept the changes.
You could have read the minutes. This is short and much. You could have read the minutes.
Well, actually, thank you very much for your forbearance in not reading the entire minutes. We appreciate that very much, and we owe you one. And now we move to the reports, and the first group to make a presentation are the Associated Student Government Officers.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Flores. I'm here representing College of Alameda. I have four quick items to report upon. Our first is Club Rush, which is scheduled for March 5th and 6th. That will be from 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. with setup established at 9:00. We'll be having food, music, and we'll be on the quad. Past Club Rushes have been really successful. They've been one of the highlights of each semester, so we're really looking forward to this year's Club Rush. The second thing that I wanted to report upon is elections. The election committee has already been set up. We've yet to officially meet, but we've begun the process of handing out the election packets and sort of forwarding that information as far as the guidelines and timetables to everyone who is interested. Application deadlines are... Do you... Yeah, the application deadline is March 12, and the elections at College of Alameda will be April 30 and May 1. The third thing that I want to report upon is a proposal that was made by a food vendor that works closely with College of Alameda and their desire to create something similar to the Off the Grid events. For those not familiar with Off the Grid, it's essentially a collection of food vendors that meet together and, you know, just sell food. And they'll be working alongside of the Alameda Swap Meet that happens every Saturday at College of Alameda. They're hoping to give out vouchers to people that then take them to the vendors and show that to them so that a portion of the purchase made at that truck goes back to the school. So we're very interested in working with them and trying to set something up. They already have something similarly set up over at Ensonell High in Alameda. Last thing that I wanted to report was scholarships, as was mentioned earlier. One of the big problems is, you know, getting that information out to students on speaking with some administrators over at College of Alameda. I was made aware of the alarmingly low rate of people that actually apply for scholarships, which is rather surprising. I always thought it was the other way around. I was going to have to fight for scholarships, but apparently that isn't the case. So I'm looking forward to working with administrators in order to help get that information out to students. You know, there's a lot of students that are in difficult financial straits, you know, and they could very well benefit from this sort of information. And with that, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Jessica Linforz. I am an Associate Students of Laney College. First that we have to report is we have a new President, Melissa Cervantes, and Vice President, Timothy Killings. At the moment, what we are working on will be a Unity Day. We're working on the proposal for that, which we are trying to get all of the Peralta Colleges to come into one campus and really get to know each other. We're also working on safety for our Laney campus because we've had a rise in a lot of people saying they've got their items stolen or other dangerous things. For events that we have coming up, we have the Sustainability Conference, which will be April 23 at Merritt and the 26th at Laney, which we invite all of you to come and attend. We also have Club Rush, which will be March 5th and 6th, which we have combined with our graduation fair to kind of drum up more support for graduation fair. We are also at our next meeting, this Thursday, from 11:30 to 1:00, we're having a presentation from Romeo Garcia to help the students learn how to get scholarships. We've done a lot of advertisement of that. I actually created a flyer for the first time. We'd also like to thank the BSU for their Black History Month. They've put on a lot of events. And lastly, on a not-so-happy note, we lost another one of our students, Trevion Foster, so we offer our deepest condolences to them and to their family and their friends and all. So that concludes my report.
Did I just press the red? Oh, it's already on. Hello, I'm Ethan Creasy. I'm President of the AS, Associated Students of Berkeley City College for my report. Right now, we are having our Club Rush. It's from 12:15 to 1:15 in our atrium for the rest of the week. It's actually turning out really well, is the first day today, and it was very crowded, very busy. We had a lot of club involvement. It was really fun. Secondly, last week, we endorsed the proposed strategic schedule. So the Associated Students of Berkeley City College are endorsing, or have endorsed it and are approving of it. For events coming up, well, we had, one of our clubs had a very successful blood drive recently. They were able to collect, yeah, 50, from 50 donors, which was very impressive. And for events coming up, there's just going to be a lot of... One of the clubs is doing a movie night to raise support for Raise the Wage campaign. So that is the report from Berkeley City College.
Thank you. There appear to be no further speakers from the Associated Student Government, and therefore, we move to the chancellor's reports.
Thank you very much, President Galasso. I just had some brief comments since our last board meeting, which seemed to be just the other day. Last week, I had an opportunity... Well, let me back up. You know, February is Black History Month, and this year, many of you know that we are commemorating the 150 years of the proclamation... Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Emancipation and proclamation, which 150 years ago, which sounds significant, but the challenge, of course, is that we're still dealing with issues of equality and race relations. And last Saturday, I had the opportunity to attend, at Merritt College, an activity sponsored by our county supervisor, Keith Carson, and the African-American organizations called Making Connections, and that activity brought together not only prominent members of our African-American community here in our service area, but brought together lots of students, faculty, administrators. Dr. Webb and I attended, and of course, Congresswoman Barbara Lee also was present. It was an all-day event, and once again puts Laney College at the forefront of community activism. And lastly, I want to commend Jeff Hayman for his most recent installment of what he creatively calls College Notes. How'd you come up with that name? No, don't even answer that, Jeff. But anyway, College Notes, recently, it was just published last Friday. I think it's on the Bay Area news circuit. If you get an opportunity, Jeff, thank you very much. It gives the community an update on what's going on around the colleges, the Peralta Colleges, and I think it's very informative, and once again puts us, the Peralta Colleges, in the public face. Thank you very much. With that, I want to move on to various reports, starting with Vice Chancellor Siddiq Ikaro, who is going to give us a brief history on the, our property on 860 Atlantic Avenue in Alameda. We've had a number of contracts and discussions about this property, and I thought it'd be valuable for the board to get a, put in a proper context as to where, how we got to where we are with property, the 860 Atlantic Avenue. So Siddiq, please.
Thank you, Chancellor. Members of the Board of Trustees, college presidents, my colleagues, and the public, this evening, I'm going to give you a quick overview of the 860 Atlantic project. For those in the community that are not aware, there's a need to give a quick overview of the historical perspective. The city of Alameda, we are planning to be able to develop Alameda Bay Point Landing. And to be able to get to this landing from the Webster Street, there was a need to be able to construct a road, a pathway, that would be able to lead to this development. So Caltrans, the city of Oakland and Peralta, were involved in negotiation as far back as 2002, with Caltrans suggesting that it is very important to move closer to the college to be able to have this street, as opposed to closer to the tube, that when you get out from the tunnel, it takes a couple of seconds for your eyes to get adjusted from darkness to daylight. So that is how this street, called Stagel Avenue, was moved closer towards the college as opposed to towards the Webster Tube. Positive. So invariably, what happened was that the piece of land that was going to be taken from College of Alameda was large. Therefore, the district wanted some sort of compensation in a way and manner that would further give opportunity for the college to develop its infrastructure for the future. So negotiation went into effect with the help of a colleague here, Tui Wen, a general counsel, and then Catellus, who was one of the liaison, negotiated to be able to procure a piece of property that is called 860 Atlantic for the district, and to be able to do this with another organization called Legacy Partners. So the land, the building itself, which is located on Atlantic Avenue, is about 25,000 square-footage area. There is a company, there was a lab company that used to, that used to utilize the building for experiment and lab work. The name of the company is Xylings. So the value of the property was 7.5 million. When this property was acquired, or during the negotiation and acquisition, the Department of General Services did its due diligence to find out, will this property meet the Field Act for education? Is it in ready condition for the colleges to be able to utilize? And the answer to the first one was that it did not quite meet all the Field Act requirements, but it was about 80% there. So what needed to be done was the ADA aspect of assessing the property and its environment, and also there were some electrical, mechanical moving of walls that needed to be done to be able to accommodate College of Alameda's science program. The science program has biology and chemistry as the main program that we are going to move into the building. Then there was also a need to have a partnership with the sister college, Merritt College, to be part of the usage for this building, because Merritt College had come to the Board of Trustees at that time to make presentation that they wanted a place for genomics technology. So this became a viable site to be able to do that. More so that Merritt College also have an upcoming program called the Science and Allied Health Building that was going to also accommodate genomics in the future. So the board did approve this contract, and then we did all the due diligence to determine the systemic retrofit that was needed, and also to look at the property assessment report. Then we hired an architect, Fisher Friedman, who was later procured by another company called NBBJ to oversee the development of this property. They met with the stakeholders for both colleges, and all of this arrangement between 2010, if you look at your spreadsheet, trustees, when this property was acquired back in 2008, it took almost a year to be able to do the planning and development because two institutions were involved in this. Then after the design was completed, this was back in November of 2009, this was sent to DSA, Department of, Division of State Architect, for review and approval. That took about four and a half months. And then when that was completed, we had a bidding process that took about six to eight weeks, and then the construction started. Now, the board approved this contract back in May, May 12 of 2009, and the contractor, Cal Pacific, started construction. During the constructions, there were a lot of code compliance issues that were DSA-related that had to be included in the construction project. Then other challenges that we faced was that while the building was under construction, it was found that to be able to do air balancing for the building was not going to be attainable. That was because the contractor had hired a mechanical engineer who was not certified and had wanted the district to go to DSA and grant an exception for that. We said, no, we can't do that. You have to get a certified contractor onboard, mechanical engineer, that can be able to do what we need to do in terms of balancing the air for the building. So that was done, and that took almost about nine months period to be completed. Then we also had to work with the colleges to get the furniture and the right kind of furnitures into the building. And now, the building took almost about two years, both from the time the construction began and the time when furniture needed to get into the building. The building is now in use. The table and the dates are indicated on the report in front of you. The chemistry department from College of Alameda has been occupying this building since July of 2011. Then we also have the genomics program that started this week over in that program. Then the biology department will be moving in this June. There are about 400 students in the biology department that will benefit from this program. Genomics, medical genomics will also be moving in, in June of this year. But currently, they have the Bioscience 37 that has already moved and have classes in the building, and they tend to have another class, a second cohort, by spring of this year. So, and in June, we also have a summer program that is coming up of about 40 students coming out from the genomics program. So the building is ready for occupancy. The electrical work for the furniture is being completed for the June moving, as we speak. And there were other things that we did in terms of providing security, because the building is not located in the main campus. So we have the sheriff department that we contract with to come to the campus at least three to four times every day to find out that, to see that all is well in the campus. And we have well-trained security guard that are onboard, that comes to work between 8:00 and 10:00 to be able to keep an eye on activities of what is going on over there. Then the other good thing that happened during this period, too, was that the city of Alameda applied for a grant. The Bay Area Metropolitan Transportation Authority granted a bus shuttle that would go from the bus station here in, by Laney College, down through this 860 to the main college. That was a grant that came through the city. And we're finding now that about 80, 90% of the beneficiary of that shuttle are Peralta students. The contract has been renewed for the second year going, and the shuttle, initially, when it started, there were about 167 passengers per day. Now it has grown to about 460, and when classes start in June for some of the department that are just coming in, this is expected to be able to rise exponentially as to the number of shuttle buses and riders that comes into this property every day. The contract has been renewed for the second year going. And the shuttle initially, when it started, there were about one hundred and sixty-seven passengers per day. Now it has grown to about four hundred and sixty. And when classes start in June for some of the department that are just coming in, this is expected to be able to rise exponentially as to the number of shuttle buses and riders that comes into this property every day. So that is the overview of the project.
Mr. President?
Yes, are there any questions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
A few questions.
Trustee Withrow.
Just one comment to begin with. It wasn't the city of Oakland that was involved, it was the city of Alameda. You, you mentioned Oakland and it's not quite.
So that is, that is Alameda, I'm sorry.
I guess my concern, when I look at this and look over the timetable, we started off in May of 2008, approximately, to start getting going here. And we're now in the middle of 2013. Will be by the June date. And we have, how many chemistry classes are taught there? We're using what, about ten percent of the building?
Right now, we are using about twenty percent of the building with the chemistry. Yeah, then the genomics program is also there right now. And they're probably using about five percent of the building. Then the rest of the building will be occupied by June and fall this year. We had made arrangement to be able to have occupancy by January, but due to logistics consigned from the college, they had to move it down to June.
But in the overall scope of things here, we're talking five years. Five years to modifying a, an existing building, albeit I understand that there are things that have to be done in terms of meeting the standards for education. But this was a, a prime piece of real estate. It had been a, the, the headquarters of a biotech firm that got bought out and they didn't need the, need the space. So it wasn't exactly a backwater type facility. And to have a, a facility sit fallow, if you will, for five years seems very unreasonable to me. I know, I do understand, there are a whole lot of issues here. But, you know, five years. And to not use property is very hard to justify. It's all here.
Thank you. Trustee Gyan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too had that same observation that it has taken actually from this. Looks like we started in March of 2008 to now. It's essentially five years later to the month, more or less. You know, when I looked at the building, when we went to go do a tour of the building before we engaged in this process, one of the reasons that I was convinced why we needed to move forward on this was because it was a brand new building, it was a modern building. And, you know, my understanding when we purchased it was it didn't need a lot of renovation and that it was an office building. It was compliant with a, a lot of the requirements of the state. But I see here, according to the schedule, it took us a whole year and a half to go through the design DSA process. And that really surprises me because I thought there were just some minor modifications that needed to be made perhaps, but not that it would take essentially a year to design the facility. And then another thing that I don't quite understand is while this building wasn't designed purposes, I'm not sure why we hired the construction management team essentially a year in advance of the construction taking place. So according to this timeline here, we hired, the board hired W.J. Robinson starting in the second quarter of 2009 through the end of 2010. And I'm hoping that the administration could provide some light as to what was taking place during that time because it would seem to me that construction itself didn't start till 2011. So why would we hire a construction manager before then? Those are some of my observations. And then lastly, the piece, the other piece why, another reason why we wanted to go into this agreement was because we wanted to offer a contract education. It was seen as an opportunity for the district to actually provide contract education to the community and probably make some money out, out of the, the acquisition of the property. I don't know what changed in the process, but that certainly has never happened. And that was one of the commitments that we made when we entered into this, this agreement for, for the community. I understand that the, probably some of the needs changed with this renovation of the science buildings going on at College of Alameda and the need for swing space. But it seems like we wasted a opportunity to even lease, lease some space in the interim there.
Thank you. Are there other comments or questions from the board? They're being done. Did you want?
I just wanted to ask.
Chancellor, could we have the Vice Chancellor respond to the questions that the trustee was raising?
Yeah, to answer your question, trustee Bell, when W.J. Robinson, who was the project manager at the time he was hired back in 2009, they did not begin work. In other words, they did not go on that contract to begin work right away. The services that they provided began in fall of that year, of, of 2009. So that the design that was being done, they could be able to take the design to do what you call constructibility review. When the construction document got to about ninety percent CD. So that is when they came in. And the reason for, for CEM coming in at that time is to be able to help do whatever they can to help reduce the, the change orders, number one. Two, to be able to see that the amount of funding that will be utilized for the construction is available, that the program is viable. And the actual construction that went on in the building involved moving walls all over the place, restrooms, new HVAC, so that the whole place was literally torn apart, even though it was an existing facility, to be able to accommodate the need of each of the colleges. Plus, in the case of Merritt College, they needed to have clean labs. And these clean labs, originally we had envisaged, maybe we have both Merritt and the College of Alameda sharing the same lab. But we'd find out that because they wanted clean labs and to avoid cross contamination, we had to do separate labs for the genomics program that could not be shared. So this was like going into a new construction, non-construction, not new, but modernization all over. So that is what happened in this case. So they didn't, they were not on board working from day one when they were hired, but they came in towards the end of the design of the construction document to advise the district.
So as, as a follow-up, Mr. President, so the acquisition of the property was seven and a half million. How much in total tenant improvements has been invested to date?
Four point six million.
So that's about twelve million dollars in total.
That is correct. And if you went into the market to try to acquire the type of building with all the equipment that we have, you probably will be able to pay close to that to this market rate. But, but beside, the issue was that this will save the colleges monies for swing space so that the money that would have been used for other swing space, both at Merritt College and at Lenny, would be utilized for the construction of the building itself. And then the other advantage is when this building or when the project, C and D, at College of Alameda and the Merritt College allied heads are completed, there is also a plan by College of Alameda to have Alameda Institute of Technology that will also be able to help with fee-based program in this facility. Then we also have opportunity for other users in the area. For instance, we have Agassi University, who is right by the corner, that is wanting to use this like on a Sunday or other areas where we can be able to rent it out. But the modernization we did was extensive.
Thank you very much for that report. I would like to make a comment. We were very excited when we acquired this building and we did perhaps have a, an unclear vision, but we had a remarkable vision of this building, the shape that was in, we took the tours and got the impression that people could move in just very shortly. Everything has been checked out, et cetera. And so we expected an immediate use of the building and thought this was a wonderful wedding of two interests, the, the city or county and the, our educational system here. So what this leads me to think is that, you know, we're always in, in the business of searching for more facilities because traditionally we grow and we continue to grow and we continue to refine the kinds of programs that we are teaching. Is that, to me, it would seem that there has to be in the future, a very, very rigorous process of thorough analysis of exactly what we're getting into before we conclude the purchase. So that we're going into it and the trustees are going into it all with wide open eyes and with a very realistic appreciation of the amount of time and resources it's going to take. So it's just a comment from my observations of this particular project.
To the chair, may I ask a quick question? I'd like to ask a question of context with respect to the eight sixty Atlantic building in terms of what comparable facilities, their educational facilities there are at this level in the area. And because I'd like to know the value of the investment that Peralta made in terms of what else is available for students that would be in the programs that are provided at an educational institution like Peralta. And also, I'd like to know what the current turnaround time is, the DSA for a modernization or a new construction, so that we have some context in terms of what it takes to create what we have now.
Usually, in terms of construction, planning and construction, you're looking at about two and a half years in general. This project could have been done in one year. And at the same time, the time it takes a DSA to approve project at that time, because this was at the height of construction, was about six months. That is how long it used to take. Now that time has been scaled down to say about four months. And the comparable build organizations in the areas are indicated is Agassi that has the whole of their university all in one facility. This facility has a lot of promise and a lot of things that it could be used for in the future. But, but the, the issue were that we wanted to be able to get two colleges that has two distinct program to be able to come out with a format and formula of what they envisage and how they're going to use it, which was not in place at the time of the acquisition. That is why the design period took so long. Because they have to walk around faculties' timeline for the colleges to be able to participate and work with them to elucidate information that is needed for programming.
Thank you. Yes, trustee Gyan.
Mr. President, I'd just like to observe that, I, I'd like to see the finished product and I don't know if that opportunity will be available for the board at some point. But I think it's, you know, it'd be important for us to see what, what it was at the beginning and where it is now. I haven't visited. I don't know if any of the trustees have. But also, I wanted to say that this might be a project for the, the district to look at naming rights opportunities or something like that and able to be able to raise funds for the college and the foundation. I'm not sure what our board policy is now. I know we recently revised our board policies in terms of naming buildings after donors or alumni or that kind of thing. But I would encourage us to maybe take a look at that as a, as a way of trying to recoup some of the costs, I think, that we invested into this facility.
Pardon me, Chair, one, if, if I may indulge. I, it's occurred to me that we do have the president of the College of Alameda here who would, if she, if, if I may ask if she has a comment regarding this matter.
Thank you, trustee Brown.
Oh, through the chancellor's, pardon me, pardon me. New trustee, I get one, I get one.
What, is there a specific question?
Yes, my question, chancellor, would be that I would just like to have a brief idea of what the president of the College of Alameda's perspective is regarding this project while we're having a presentation regarding something that she would be integrally involved in.
Dr. Jackson.
Thank you, chancellor. And thank you, trustee Brown. I, I just want to reiterate basically what Dr. Icaro said. There are a lot of things, and trust me, I was the vice president of instructions. So this was my baby, in effect, as we moved through the process. And there was one correction I'd like to make. It was that it took five years to be there. It really took three years because we moved in partially in 2011. The other item was, and this is the part that you don't see until you actually get in and open up the walls, all of the infrastructure there. Rather than leaving the infrastructure so that we could just plug in like we thought we could do, the contractor cut all of the lines. So all of the data lines, all of that had to be redone. The air conditioning unit that we thought was in functioning order, when it got to DSA, they said you have to go back and redo it. So then that took another period to go out to bid, to award the contract for it to actually be installed. And there's really only two periods that we can move faculty. One is in the summer because, because we have a reduced load and we can actually move them. And the other is during the holiday break. Other than that, we have classes going on. And trying to move classes while they're in process really isn't tenable. So those are some of the other obstacles that we had to address as we went forward. The facility now, the faculties are telling me that they don't know if they want to move back onto the campus. They love that building because it, it really is a nice building now. But a lot of work has gone in to make it so that they're happy with that move and that we weren't just moving people and then having our space sit idle because we aren't doing any demo on the C and D building. So those were the other items that we weighed in moving the full faculty over.
Thank you, President Jackson.
Further comments? So I guess the, the policy question is, is this or not, is it or is it not a temporary facility relocation? I mean, this was sort of supposed to be the facility to be able to deal with the construction happening at the campuses. So if it's going to be a permanent facility, then we ought to say that. If that's what it's going to be, or is it in fact going to be used for other purposes, which is contract ed purposes as it was established? I don't know the answers to those questions, but I think those questions need to be looked at and raised at some point. If it's going to be a permanent extension, then that's what it needs to be. But let's be clear about what it is and what the purpose of that facility is.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
Just briefly, President, so chancellor, so it appears like on many of these projects that we engage in that there's unforeseen circumstances, ADA and different issues, like you mentioned, cutting, tearing down the walls. So that does delay time. And I was just, and then of course, we had to be very sensitive about the players who are involved in having their input into the design and where they want this lab to be or not. So just given my brief experience on the board has been like this is not untypical of how projects, you know, go, unfortunately. But there's just so many players involved and we have to be very mindful of that. And then things is unforeseen. When you go into a building, anything can happen. So I appreciate your, your, your report and I think we can move on.
I did, I did want to have one, one comment.
Dr. Trustee.
I don't remember ever committing this to contract education or anything like that. I know that there were many discussions when we first entered into the project and things changed afterwards. But I don't remember at any time us having any specific use identified for this facility.
Thank you. I think with that, chancellor, are we ready to move on to?
Yes, thank you very much. And thank you, Vice Chancellor Icaro, for your work. I, I can tell that the board appreciated that information. I also want to point out to the board that in your drop box is a college report from Dr. Ambres Galavis on Merritt College. We tried to provide the board with regular college briefings, at least in writing, and that's available to you in the drop box. With that, that the ends the chancellor's reports for this evening.
Thank you. We move now to the board of trustees' reports. And why don't we begin with trustee Withrow to the right here? Pass. Brian?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank the colleges-
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank the colleges and the local BSUs on each campus for putting together some great Black History Month events. I hope we can do the same for Women's History Month coming up. This Saturday, I attended an education conference at Cal State East Bay where I was able to talk to junior high and high school students about the advantages of attending community college that was put together by the APAS program at Laney College. Also, on March 7th, we'll be meeting the Peralta Student Council. We'll be meeting with the chancellor. Our main topic will be financial aid. And then also, two weeks ago, we lost another Laney student, Trevion Foster. You know, this is becoming like a constant, you know, we're losing students every single semester. So I talked with Dr. Webb and some other faculty about putting together like a peace conference at Laney College. We'll have more details upcoming, but we need to start working with the community to try to end this nonsense. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee again.
Just briefly, Mr. President, I wanted to piggyback on the words of trustee Cervantes. One of the things that I know runs common when you look at the data amongst a lot of our youth who we've lost is the lack of attendance at school. And it starts at the kindergarten level, the middle school level, and truancy, I think, plays a big factor in the student success. You look at transcripts from students, particularly those students who have dropped out and they end up coming to our colleges, I think it would behoove us to, and I know the administration does this, but I've been approached by some of my colleagues at OUSD to perhaps have a joint meeting between OUSD and the Peralta colleges to do a review of programs where we overlap, programs where we work together, and how we might be able to strengthen our partnerships together. We all work to try to achieve the same sort of goals, but it'd be good to know in a more formalized fashion, and I know Dr. Ortiz is in conversations with the superintendent, but trying to figure out perhaps how we might be able to highlight areas where we currently have partnerships and figure out how to strengthen other areas where we might need to improve on together. So that's a project that I'm going to be looking forward to participating in in the next few months here. And I think we'll see that we might be able to have a lot of direct influence and impact on trying to save more of our kids.
Thank you, trustee again, and trustee Riley. Trustee Handy. And Sharon?
Thank you, Director Galasa. I also attended the conference at Laney College this Saturday on the strategies and outcomes for the Black community, and it was a very informative and inspiring event. There were a lot of issues that we discussed involving health, mental health in terms of relationships, communication, emotional well-being, as well as economic development and political empowerment. So it was something that I think is timely and something we intend to continue as a region. And it was a job well done by Laney College and supervisor Keith Carson.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes the reports from the board. And now we'll hear a report from the district academic senate.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, chancellor, district administration center staff, college presidents, colleagues and members of the public. Given the state's recent student success task force recommendations and the increasingly intent focus on completion as a primary measure of success, many constituents are seeking answers to the question, how can student support be implemented to improve completion? You may recall that Peralta formed its own student success task force to identify components of those recommendations that can be applied to our students in helpful rather than restrictive ways. We expect to hear about some of those local strategies before the end of the semester. Last month, the RP group issued a research report entitled "Student Support Redefined: Using Student Voices to Redefine Support," based on responses that were collected during spring semester 2012 from nearly 900 students attending a total of 13 colleges around the state. Students were asked what they think supports their educational success, paying special attention to the factors African American and Latinos cite as important to their achievement. "Student Support Redefined" is a three-year study that aims to understand how, in an environment of extreme scarcity, community colleges can deliver support both inside and outside the classroom to improve success for all students. The report is a summary of discoveries from the RP group's year-one examination of student support, and it is written for those interested in advancing student's success from policymaking boards like yours to the students themselves. "Student Support Redefined" is organized around a cluster of six success factors that students say are important to their success as community college learners. These six factors are directed, focused, nurtured, engaged, connected, and valued. The report addresses findings around each action verb with a set of factor-specific questions we can use to guide our exploration of why these factors matter and how we can incorporate them into our emerging student success strategies. Last week, the district academic senate began its exploration by selecting a few of these questions for a meaningful results-driven discussion at each of our meetings for the remainder of the semester. Since some of the questions pertain to institutional priorities, perhaps there are ways to incorporate them into your policy discussions. Here are two questions that seem most appropriate for that purpose. Valued. In what ways can the institution make explicit to students, particularly historically underrepresented and first-generation students, that someone at our colleges cares about them and their success? Engaged. What professional development and ongoing support do faculty need to ensure that they are using engaging, student-centered pedagogical approaches in their courses and programs? A few success factor questions that are specific to faculty and what we can do to better support student completion have larger implications. Among them, designing classrooms that lend themselves to providing the kind and quality of attention students need. As Peralta Federation of Teachers, President Goldstein mentioned earlier this evening, one important adjustment will be having manageable class sizes with enrollment maximums set for sound pedagogical and now student success reasons. Clearly, when students need additional attention to succeed, not many can get that attention in classrooms filled to fire code capacity. In the coming weeks, the DAS and the PFT will be discussing how our joint concerns can result in class size maximums that meet teacher and student needs while also meeting our enrollment targets. The RP group anticipates that this first phase of student perspectives will offer concrete strategies for community college educators to consider and keep the dialogue around redefining support services focused on the students in all phases of the research project. Next week, March 8th, at Berkeley City College, the RP group will offer the seventh in a series of networking events intended to uncover successful completion agenda programs. These are programs that develop and implement initiatives to address the persistence, acceleration, and completion of underprepared and underrepresented students. To register for the event, visit the link that will be included in the written version of this report. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it.
Thank you, Dr. Van Putten. And I believe we have a question from trustee again.
I appreciate the comments in terms of the capacity issues at the district, but it seems to me that we have a somewhat of a disincentive in the way, the policy, the way it's set up in that we want to build bigger classrooms so that you can have increased productivity rates. So I don't know where that disconnect is, and it seems like the form, it seems like we are rewarded based on the larger classrooms that we have, they're able to teach as opposed to, or maybe I have that wrong, but I'd like to talk to you or learn more about that particular piece, how that formula works.
Trustee, if I may respond briefly. It is not my understanding that building larger classrooms is a desirable objective. And I'm not quite sure how you have come to have the understanding that that is what we are doing because it is counterproductive.
It's counterproductive to the student outcome, but in terms of the financial equation, that's what I'm getting at. And that's a tension, I guess, that I'm seeing. The pedagogical need to have a smaller classroom versus the need to be, to have higher productivity in classrooms. And maybe I have that wrong, and I'd love to be corrected on that, but I don't understand how that formula actually works.
That's probably a larger discussion that the chancellor can most effectively manage. However, it is correct, as you pointed out, that productivity is driving our decisions about class sizes. And it is also correct to note that class sizes are undermining, if they are large, student success.
See, the formula that you were asking about, at the risk of sounding simplistic, is really a factor of the more students you have, the ratio of more students to a single instructor, that's where the FTES from those students then increases revenue versus a stable cost that you have for the single instructor. So that's where the productivity, when the productivity goes up, you increase your revenue, but not necessarily your costs. The room size then is an issue because, as has been pointed out, pedagogically, the smaller class size is more effective for student success. So there's a, I think, as you already pointed out, a contradiction with pedagogical theory versus the economic formula that we're dealing with. I don't know if that helps understand.
No, that's a predicament we're in.
Exactly.
I'd like to make a very quick comment, and I know this is not an agenda item, but it is a delivery in a regular course of our dealings here, and I think it's appropriate. As a former college instructor, there are several things that govern these kinds of class sizes. One of them is certain class sizes are written into the contract if they're very sensitive classes that require, for example, basic skills classes and so on that require extraordinary contact. At the same time, we would have a mix of super-large classes, a super teacher who wants to teach 300, 400 students in history with a number of assistants. And these were extremely successful classes, and they kept other classes going because the return on the investment in that teacher was extraordinary, and that teacher would only teach one class per semester. So there's a variety of ways you deal with it. And also, incentives are built in. If you have a class where it's mostly lecture as opposed to individual participation, then you can have, it can be expandable if the classroom allows, and the teachers are given a extra stipends depending on the size of the class. So pedagogy and the classroom size and the number of students varies considerably, but I think the principle of making certain, that the students and the teacher and the subject being taught reach a very happy balance. Thank you.
Now we move to presentations. And I believe the first is Laney College Facilities Master Plan and Dr. Webb.
President Galasa, I'd like to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Item number six, I want to reschedule.
Okay.
Because the principals are not available this evening. So we can move on to the presentation number seven, which is the ARC data report. Vice Chancellor.
Mr. President, would that mean that we're removing item number 20 from the agenda? Item number 20 is consider approval of the Laney College Facilities Master Plan.
Correct.
Okay, so we're making that change to the agenda.
And I apologize for that. It just came to my attention.
Thank you. And we'll have the item 20 impleed.
Yes. So Vice Chancellor, Dr. Michael Orkin is going to provide the state accountability report for the community colleges. I think this is up on the screen.
So good evening, trustees, Peralta colleagues, and community. I have a short PowerPoint to go over some of the data elements in the ARC report, the 2012 ARC report. And I'd like to thank my colleagues in institutional research, Joanne Phillips, Hui Zhang, and Sharom Batanini, who have helped put together this report. So the documents that are called ARC documents are on the state chancellor's website. Today, we're talking about the 2012 ARC report. And there's a large report on the, that came from the state chancellor. The state chancellor's office prepares this report that's dated March 2012. Our colleges, that is, the Peralta colleges, are on these pages if you're looking through the final report, March 2012. And in the ARC report, the ARC report is concerned with data and also college reports on what are called performance indicators, which are the measures of student success that are used in this particular report. And there are really, there are two basic ways to analyze these measures. One is to look at cohorts and follow groups of students over time for each college, which is one of the methods of analysis or description that's used in this report. And the other is by looking at peer groups, which are similar institutions and to see how one college compares with other colleges in a peer group, which is similar according to certain statistically determined factors. And then finally, there's a demographic profile. In the actual ARC report final that comes from the state chancellor's office, there are demographic profiles for each college. At the end of this PowerPoint, I've put together a more recent demographic profile of Peralta with the colleges combined together. So you can see they're one. So there are different categories, and the first one is called degree certificate transfer. And in this first batch of three factors, the first one is called progress and achievement. And essentially, that means that if you're in this group, this measures students who essentially made it through the system in one of three ways: transferred to a four-year college, earned a degree or a certificate, or achieved what's known as transfer status in a six-year period. In order to get into this group, you have to have started out by having a certain number of units and attempted a higher-level course. The second measure is earned at least 30 units within the community college system. So that's another measure of achievement. And finally, in this group, persistence, enrolled in six or more units in the fall and are still in the system a year later. So that means students who satisfy C here are persisting within the system. They didn't just drop out. So the way I've organized this, I have first the cohorts and then the peer groups for each of the categories. So in the first one, each of the measures, progress and achievement. So as I said, there's a six-year period that these, that the students in these cohorts are given to be successful in the way as it's defined. And so for each college, there's a bar representing each of the three cohorts. So you can see essentially over time, the first cohort starts in the 2003-04 academic year, the second one, 2004-05, and the third one, 2005-06, and ends six years later. And so you can see Alameda moved up. These are percentage essentially success rates. But all four colleges are essentially, there aren't any big variations, let's put it that way. And And this sort of follows throughout this report, and I'll have some comments about that at the end. And the next of the same measure is, that is, progress and achievement are the peer groups. And most of the peer groupings include all four colleges within a peer group, and that's because our colleges are very close together and have similar demographic characteristics. So for instance, in this particular peer group, all four colleges, they don't have to be, but all four colleges in the district are in the same peer group. And so this blue bar is actually, if you look at the previous cohort, represents the number in the most recent cohort. So that's where that number comes from. And then to the right is the peer group average, low and high. And there are typically 10 or 15 colleges in a peer group. Some, some have more. This first peer group actually is larger, has more like 25. But you can see the average, the peer group average is 57% for this one, and Alameda, Berkeley and Laney are pretty much, are very close to the average, and Merit's a little bit lower. And the high, let's go back to that, is 68%. The low, the peer group low is 41%. The next one, earned at least 30 units. So we got, look at the cohorts first. And again, they're pretty flat across the three cohorts, that is, sort of longitudinally. And so there aren't any big variations, which is sort of interesting because these were some rocky times when all the big budget cuts took place. So one could say, even though there's room for improvement, the Peralta colleges held their own. And then if you look at earned at least 30 units, the peer groups here also, all four colleges are in the same peer group, and they're all around the average of 70%. And a copy of this PowerPoint was put in your Dropbox, trustees. Persistence means you started out at Peralta and were in the system, one year later, by the system and the sense of the ARC report, that means somewhere in the California Community College system. So the cohorts, persistence is sort of stable at Alameda. Berkeley climbs up, Laney climbs up, and there's this straight, this blip up in Merit. In the second cohort, I'm not sure how to explain that, there might have been a data collection error. This data comes from MIS, by the way. And if you look at the peer groups, in this particular peer group, the persistence peer group there, actually, the Peralta colleges are split into two peer groups, are members of two separate peer groups. Alameda and Laney are in one. And in this one, you can see both Alameda and Laney are above the peer group average of 61%. Not quite up to the peer group high of 72%. And the second separate peer group that's for this characteristic, Berkeley and Merit, the peer group average was 58%. Berkeley is well above that, Merit is below. So then moving on to the next one, the next category is vocational occupational workforce development, which could loosely be considered CDE-type courses. And characteristic, or measure D is successful course completion rate for credit vocational courses. So this is essentially CDE courses for credit. And successful course completion rate means students completed a course with a C or better, ABC or pass. And that's looked at out of the group of students who completed the course, which includes any grade. So successful completion is one of the standard measures of success. And here we have the cohorts that are all rather amazingly similar. In fact, if you look statewide, you'll see similar types of things. And one of the motivating factors for creating the Student Success Task Force, both statewide and Peralta, the Peralta one and other efforts at Peralta, is that some of these sort of, some of these issues are wide-reaching, and we need to search for new ways to tackle student success. And Dr. Van Putten mentions the same problems in her reports, same types of issues. And then the peer groups in this one, Alameda's in a separate peer group. And you can see it's slightly, it's below average in this one. This is the successful completion rate for vocational. And then the other three colleges are in a different peer group, and these peer groups are determined at the state level, by the way. And you can see they're all, all three are a little below average, the other three colleges for this particular peer group. Okay, and then the next grouping has to do with, of measures has to do with pre-collegiate improvement. In other words, basic skills type courses. And in fact, basic skills in ESL, so ESL's not really considered basic skills, so pre-collegiate. Measure E is called successful course completion rate for credit basic skills courses. And then the next one is improvement rate for credit basic skills and for credit ESL courses. So successful course completion means the same as it did with CTE, namely, got through the class with a C or better. And so those are the cohort results. And all four colleges are in the same peer group for successful course completion for basic skills. And you can see that Alameda and Laney had the highest rates, which are actually close to the top of the peer group. And Merit and Berkeley were a bit lower. And then improvement rate generally means you take, you successfully take a course, and then sometime in a given time period, in this case, it's a three-year time period, you move on and you take a higher level course in that area, and you succeed in that. So that's the general definition of improvement rate. So what percentage of students do that? And so to be in this cohort, you have to take a course in this level and succeed. And then to be one of the successful ones, you have to then take a higher level course sometime in the next three, three, within three years. So those are the cohorts. And those are the peer group results. And all four colleges are in the same peer group for this one. And then ESL improvement rate, here are the cohorts. So ESL improvement means the same thing, namely, a student takes a course, succeeds in it, and then sometime in the next three years, takes a higher level course in this area and succeeds in it. And the peer groups, for some reason, there's another, the peer group low on this one was zero. I'm not sure what that means. And maybe ESL courses weren't offered or at this, at one of the colleges in this peer group. But, so the only things that show up are the peer group average and the peer group high. And Laney and Berkeley were above the average, peer group average in that. And whoops, yeah, so that was just three of the four colleges, and then there's a separate peer group for Alameda. And that one did have a peer group low of 10%. Alameda's up there above average. Okay, so that concludes the, the performance indicators in, or the success indicators in the, this, that part of the ARC report. And then at, for this part of the PowerPoint, I have, as I said, put together some Peralta demographics that mirror the individual college demographics, but that are from a year or so earlier that are, should show up in the main ARC report. And so there's ethnicity, and this is district-wide, head count by cities, our service cities, gender, day and evening students. And residency, resident, foreign and out-of-state students. And then age distribution of Peralta students, and this is all for Fall 12. Okay? And then I have a couple of slides that just mention peer groups and how they're determined. So peer groups, so when you're, when you're trying to compare, when you're looking at data, you want to have something to compare it with, like a baseline or a control group or something. And a peer group is another way of having a sensible method of comparing. It's also a way to look at similar colleges and maybe get ideas from ones who are doing something different from you and do better on the particular measure that you're interested in. So the, these peer groups in the ARC report are based on statistical analyses of, they're called, in the ARC report, they're called uncontrollable variables, but that sort of boils down to demographic characteristics that correlate with the performance indicators. You don't want to group colleges based on similarities that have absolutely nothing to do with what you're analyzing. And so statistical analysis done of the performance indicators, and each one of them, each measure is correlated with various demographic or uncontrollable factors to, which are used to have a method of grouping the colleges into peer groups. Okay? And so as we've seen, Peralta colleges generally, but not always, have the same peer groups. And so this is like the first one, the progress and achievement indicator, which is called progress and achievement, part A. Here's just, this slide just shows which peer groups are in this peer group, which is called the A4. You can find it on page 747 in the main report. And you can see all four colleges are in there, and some of the others are American River, Cabrillo, Canyons, Foothill, Glendale, et cetera. And these are the predictors that are used to define that peer group. If you're interested in that, you can read appendix C in the main report. And the three most important or the most highly correlated predictors were percent of students at a college age 25 and over, a percentage of students taking basic skills classes, and what's called the Bachelor Plus Index, which is put together at the state level, which is essentially the, measures the number of people in the service area who have a bachelor's degree or better, who are over age 25. Conclusions. So, well, you could see yourself, I don't need to have these conclusions here. Peralta's sort of average and stable when compared to peers, and even looking at the cohorts, modest improvement in some areas. There are some system-wide issues. If you look at this data across the system, you'll see sort of stagnant student success rates, which is not something to brag about. So the main question then is, oh, I wanted to mention a couple of things before getting to the main question. There's some other data that you can look at. There's just, the ARC report does not have disaggregated data. So if you want to have success persistence and transfer data and other, the other types of things that were in the ARC report that's disaggregated by, by demographic characteristics, you can look at our institutional research website, there's the link. Transfers to UC and CSU by ethnicity, you can get disaggregated demographic data that's not in ARC. And this is held true for the last few years. Peralta ranks very high in African-American student transfers to UC and CSU. Here's a link that has the CSU breakdown, the UC one, we had to get directly from UC, I have that data separately. The CPAC website is no longer available with this type of data. Okay, so now, finally, what are the next steps? And Peralta's very, is going to be very ambitious this year in trying to, and there are different groups across our district who are working on this. I've listed three bullet points here of what to do about some of this, of the sort of stagnant success rates and measured in various ways. One of them, and I consider this to be perhaps the most interesting and exciting new development based on statewide research, assessment and placement. So it, right now, many colleges throughout the system, including Peralta, use the compass test to assess and place students into either basic skills or college level or transfer level courses. There are a lot of problems with that. And a study that was done, that was sort of pioneered at Long Beach City College and then has spread statewide, and there has been money, and it was, part of it was sort of overseen by the RP group, has to do with using high school transcripts, in particular, high school grades, to place students in math and English when they come from high school. And it turns out that this is an amazingly powerful tool, seems obvious, I guess, but people haven't really been using it that much. And so the project statewide is called the STEPS Project. And Laney, we got, we used CalPAS data to get some information about Laney. But Long Beach City actually went ahead and used, had a, an experimental project to use high school transcripts, in particular, high school English and math grades, to place high school students into classes instead of using the compass test, and with rather amazing initial results. And I will have a, a presentation on that soon, probably in March, to talk about this. And this could completely, this could really have an effect on our success rates. The next bullet point is acceleration. At Peralta, there are various attempts at accelerated classes. ESL is, our ESL courses are the most, our ESL faculty are the most active in doing that right now, and they're already experiencing some interesting results in how acceleration helps students get through the system and not stagnate. And there are other new methods to improve student success, which various people will be talking about. One of them is improved methods of orientation. And hopefully, at a future board meeting soon, there will be a presentation of the very interesting online orientation program that Laney has right now, and that we hope to expand district-wide if, if possible, sometime by the end of this year. In, I wanted to mention one or two other things. The, I believe Dr. Van Putten has already mentioned, or someone's already mentioned tonight, and this guest mentioned that Peralta has its own Student Success Task Force, which is a rather large group, and is experimenting around with new methods. I have a smaller group, which I'm calling the Student Success Organizational Group, which consists of three faculty members and myself. And this semester, and the faculty members are Sonia Fernetta, Lisa Cook, and Scott Heshida, who are from Laney and BCC. And this semester, we're going to be finding out all of the different student success projects, grant-funded or otherwise, that are being done at Peralta, and put them on a website and have like a portal to student success methods that everyone can look at to get ideas. And there'll also be links to other types of student success methods, like the STEPS Project, which at Long Beach City, by the way, is called Promise Pathways. And so that's another event, another ongoing activity that's taking place this semester, and hope to have a lot of information to show you what, as to what Peralta's doing in terms of trying to improve its student success in a nice, organized way by the end of the semester. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Yes, Trustee Brown?
I've been trying to understand the cohorts, I mean, the peer groups, rather, in terms of colleges and the groups, and how you judge the basic skills, where the starting point is. Because some of the colleges that are in the peer group with the Peralta colleges don't seem to be very similar in terms of some of the demographics. Although I understand there's statistical data that's looked at, it just appears to have a different, they don't have the same immigration, they don't have the same language issues, they don't.
Right, so, so I understand exactly what you're saying. And so the factors that are used to determine the peer groups are the ones that correlate most highly with the particular measures of student success that are used for the ARC report, the ones that I went over. And so a particular peer group will be organized by factors that are relevant in terms, statistically relevant, namely correlated, with the particular question that's being answered regarding student success. So there may be lots of other demographic characteristics that seem like, well, you say, oh, this, this college has absolutely nothing in common with this other college. And based on many of the demographic characteristics, that's true. But it turns out, from the statistical analyses, that the two colleges have a lot in common when it comes to that particular measure, like. when it comes to that particular measure, like progress and achievement, or persistence, or earned at least 30 units. And so, something called a regression analysis is done to determine these things. And it's also true, though, that if you look through all of the peer groups, you'll see that, as we noticed, that Peralta colleges are all four in the same peer group, for a lot of them, and maybe on a couple aren't. But it's not just demographic factors, it's demographic factors or other factors that are called uncontrollable factors that are specifically related or statistically related to that particular item in the ARC report.
That- well, okay, so Saddleback, for instance, in Peralta.
So what?
Saddleback in Peralta, Orange County and Northern Cal- and the Bay Area.
Okay. So, it could be that for that particular, if that was on the slide, it could be that that particular college district or college has a similar number of students in the service- I mean, of people in the service area who have a bachelor's degree. Or it could be that there are a similar percentage of students over 25 years old at that college. Whatever those- so, those could be the two most relevant characteristics for that particular ARC report question. So, even though on the surface of it, a college in Orange County and a college at Peralta seem to be not, I mean, on the face of it, those do not seem to be similar colleges. But in terms of this analysis, maybe they are with respect to a particular factor.
Are there any further questions from members of the board? Thank you, Dr. Orkin. That was a very illuminating. And at this point, we come to the consent calendar. Is there a move to approve the consent calendar?
A second.
President, President Galasa.
Removal of item 20.
President Galasa, I want to, excuse me, I have this behind me, but I want to point out that item 10 in the consent calendar, there's an adjustment, this, it reads that you receive and accept. This is actually going to be brought back. So, this item is a first read of the accreditation reports, and it will be brought back to the board on your first meeting in March, March 12, for your acceptance.
Thank you for that clarification.
This is due, gives it an opportunity for board members to provide more input.
As you say, as a first reading analogous to our board policies, et cetera.
Yeah. So, you acknowledge receipt, and then, at the next meeting, we'll ask for your acceptance.
I thank you.
Okay.
I thank you for that. With that modification and-
And just for the record, Mr. President, that's item number 10 is considered received in accordance of ACCJC follow-up reports for College of Alameda, Merritt College, Brooklyn City College, and Laney.
And item 20, that was also pulled, do we need to identify that?
Item number 20 that was pulled is consider approval of the Laney College Facilities Master Plan. That has been removed from the consent calendar.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
All those opposed, abstentions? I thank you all. That concludes the agenda for today. Is there a final report, Vice President, again?
Mr. President, just two quick things. Our next board meeting is happening March 12 here at the district offices. For some reason, I had a note that it was up at Merit, but I believe it's here at the district office. And also, just a reminder to the public that daylight savings time is March 10, and don't forget to spring one hour forward. That concludes the announcements, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned.